Ms. Sanyuk?
Here.
Mr. Cook?
Here.
Mr. Knutson?
Here.
Mr. Preister?
Here.
Ms. Blood?
Present.
Second item, Open Meetings Act is posted in the entry to the council chambers. Item number three, additional items. 3A, I do not see Dan Thiel with Sarpy County Economic Development here yet, so we'll move on to item number 3B. Do we have OPPD representative here? See none?
Oh, really?
I move on to item number 3C, City Administrator's Report.
I think I agree with her.
Mr. Burlowitz.
Well, I thought I had a little time to prepare, just in case, but since nobody's here at this moment. As usual, I and/or staff would entertain any questions the council may have.
Are there any questions?
Really?
See none? Thank you. Are there any reports from committees? See none? Okay. Item number four, review and discussion without actions of items on the agenda of this evening's regular council meeting at 6:00 PM. Begin with item number three, approval of the minutes and advisory committee reports. Approval of agenda. Approval of consent agenda. Approval of the minutes of the October 27th regular and pre-council meeting. The acknowledged receipt of the minutes of October 15, 2014, Board of Adjustment. Item number four, approval of claims. Item five, special presentation, this evening proclamation, November 15, 2014, as America Recycles Day. Oh. Ms. Sanyuk.
I'll ask this. I asked Jeff Roberts, but it's probably good for everybody to hear. I know we were talking about the Sarpy County landfill being full and capped off and having to haul our garbage to David City. And then, but then I heard now it's... Mr. Roberts, would you respond to that? How much more time do they think it'll be before they close that?
I believe it's two more years before they close it.
Okay. I didn't realize that. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Preister?
That was the plan up until just this summer, and then the county somehow was able to produce some additional space in the existing landfill. And so then they predict that they can go another two years. So we were told right up until into the summer that it was going to be closed, and it was going to be shipped, and we were preparing for that. But at this point, the transfer station has already been built, and there was an article in the Leader and in the paper talking about some of the particulars of that.
Thank you. Item number six, liquor license, Willow Springs Bottling Company. Seven, ordinance for adoption, third reading, ordinance number 3782. 7B, ordinance number 3783. Item eight, ordinance for public hearing, second reading, 8A, ordinance number 3785. 8B, ordinance 3786. Takes us to item number nine, ordinance for introduction, first reading, ordinance 9A, ordinance number 3787. Mr. Cook?
Quick question on waiving the three readings. Is there a reason for that? Is there an emergency or something going on here?
Mr. ...
I don't know if Jeff or...
No, it's nothing controversial. They are kind of anxious to get a, either a garage or shed, built before the snow flies. So in order to get the shed built, they have to meet these setback requirements. That's why we're vacating this. But they want to get it moving before winter.
Thank you.
9B, ordinance number 3788. Mr. Cook?
Chris, real quick, I drove out there. Is this the land north, on the northeast corner of 48th and Raynor Boulevard? And would it be between Raynor Boulevard and the creek?
Yes.
And that's all developable?
Yes, actually, when it was originally developed, you know, back as part of Ashford Hollow and as Twin Creek Estates before that, they did fill it, raised the elevation up so it's above floodplain level. Part of what is Lot 1 is still in the floodplain, and they don't plan on actually doing anything on there other than if it's approved, and they have their landscaping business putting some landscaping materials back in that part that's still in the floodplain. But the rest of it is out of the floodplain.
Okay. Thank you.
9B, I think that's what we just did. 9C, ordinance number 3789. Mr. Preister?
Thank you, Mayor. I would ask Steve Carmichael if, in that amendment, since he had a concern, he would be more comfortable with the sentence on line 11, "All written requests will be forwarded to the city administrator for review," and then there was a period, and leave out the rest of that sentence. So you don't have to answer now, or you can, but just a consideration, because I share some of your concern with that.
Mr... I'm going to have Mr. Sullivan say a few words first. Go ahead.
The provision in there in regard to sending it to the administrator is something very similar that I did with having it sent to the superintendent with the school district. And the reason for that is, we would get somebody on there that would say their agenda and item is the budget. Well, what about the budget? You want to... My agenda item is Hayworth Park. Well, what about Hayworth Park? And we were finding, to some extent, that some people were trying to, at least in my opinion, were trying to make it sufficiently vague that we wouldn't really be prepared or knew what was coming at us at that meeting. So the idea of sending it to the administrator is, well, if it's Hayworth Park, what is it about Hayworth Park? Be more specific so that we can get Parks Director in and be able to address that, as opposed to potentially bringing something up that we'd have to delay or not even give the speaker ample time, or adequate answer, because we had no idea specifically what was coming up.
What I, and I agree, the administrator needs to have, just like anything we send, has to go through the administrator, has to be reviewed, and if there's a concern, it comes back to us from him, and he can speak to that. But Pat, the part I was suggesting doesn't necessarily deal with that component. The part that would be eliminated could still be done, but what would be eliminated is, and determination whether the request presents an issue that can be handled administratively. So it still would go through the administrator. Everything would be done. Dan could still check and see if somebody could administratively handle it. Maybe it's handled, and if Dan wanted, he could let him know. They may not show up then. But it's only that portion, and I think that's an area of concern.
That's my overriding...
Yeah, and I would concur. It doesn't not, that doesn't have to be stated in the ordinance by any means, because it's something that we normally, as practice. That's the reason why I did provide you a copy of the council policy on agenda preparation, which is similar to what Pat says. We at least need it, whatever they're going to ask or indicate they want to speak on it, does need to be at least specific and clear enough for two reasons. For one thing, the city clerk has to know how to put it on the agenda. And if we get a rambling email, or we're not sure potentially what the topic really is, and so we might, we might, we might say, phrase it other than how that individual wishes it to be, and so we'd be, might say, we wouldn't be on the same page in terms of preparing for it. As you can see, in the, in the policy, it says, you know, shall be written stating the specific issue or background. So it gives us something also to properly prepare. Currently, if it's something we can handle administratively, when we get something like that, whether it be even maybe a concern that's brought to us by a council member, we'll obviously try to determine, is this something we can resolve? And clearly, if we can't resolve, we won't even go that route. If we can, we'll try. So when it does come to council, we can at least report to you that we've taken certain steps to maybe deal with it, but maybe we weren't successful, or it didn't sufficiently satisfy that citizen's issue.
If the, if the request to speak before the council is clear and concise, and it deals exactly with what they want to speak about, I have no problem with that. I just don't want to put us into a situation where we limit the public's ability to talk if they choose to. But number one, limit them to what they want to speak about.
Yeah, and again, Councilman Carmichael, that would be the intent, just to make sure it's clear, not only for administration, but also as council members. So you know ahead of time, preparing on an individual basis, what you can lend to that conversation. So we can be as prepared as possible. It's not intended, nor would it be even currently, to intentionally screen out people's ability to come to the council and speak.
Ms. Sanyuk.
So Councilman Preister, you're saying that you would like to amend it so it reads, "All written requests will be forwarded to the city administrator for review, period, then strike and determination whether," et cetera, et cetera? Is that, that's what you're saying?
Just up through administratively. So the period would be after review on line 11, and we would strike and determination whether the request presents an issue that can be handled administratively.
Got it. Thank you.
And I think having the administrator assess it and the clerk is important, because the Open Meetings Act does require that everything be on the agenda in sufficient description so that a reasonable person would know exactly what they were speaking about. So to say Hayworth Park, to say the budget, wouldn't be enough. So I think the administrator does need to have the authority to ask them for more clarity if that's the case. Because if it doesn't meet the guidelines of the Open Meetings Act, then we're still in violation. That part, I just, I agree with Pat. I think we need to have it there.
Mr. Sullivan?
I think I understand what Councilman Carmichael's trying to say is, even though we may think that it's been administratively resolved, the person who wants to speak may not feel that it's administratively resolved. And if they want to stay on the agenda despite the fact that we think we got it taken care of, they should be entitled to do so.
That's correct, Ben.
So I think we can tailor that language a little bit, because I think you still want your administrator to see whether he can get it administratively resolved.
Right.
So let's try to, I'll try to find some language that we can cover the concern.
Thank you.
And I think any of those issues would be good to bring up so that we can discuss them in the public hearing, rather than after the public has spoken, and then we start trying to amend or do things later. I just think, that's why I wanted to at least offer and ask. So I appreciate that you raised the issue over the weekend.
Mr. Burlowitz?
Yeah, and to kind of reiterate what Pat said, again, it would be just to allow, if possible, to deal with it administratively. Clearly, as I said, we might feel we have a solution. The individual might not feel that satisfactory, and so it shouldn't be preempted for them to be able to come forward. It's just that, obviously, if we can resolve it without having it be brought before the council, not only does it save council time and energy, but hopefully it might avoid the necessity for a citizen to come to the council if we can, in fact, deal with it ahead of time.
Sanyuk.
There's no reason that we can't put this form on the website and have people submit it electronically, is there?
Yeah.
I think, yeah, I think that would be a good idea, too.
Kathy, our intent would be to do that.
Okay.
We want to be as paperless as possible, and we also want to be as expedient as possible on both ends.
Okay, good. Any other further discussion, questions? Moving on to item number 10, none, 11, none, 12, current business, 12A, approve of nominations. 12B, approve of application of waivers of hunting regulations. C, approval of charge point, charging station. D, request permission to seek bids. E, acceptance of grant funding from the 2014 Storm Water Management Program. Mr. Preister?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to ask Jeff, I know that we use this for a number of things, including putting these little stickers on our storm inlets to remind people not to dump oil and other pollutants down them. Green Bellevue has done over 2,000 of these with our volunteers. I think you're still getting these through that program, and I think you still need some done. I don't remember the exact count. We had 5,000 or so when we started. I think it's down to roughly 2,000 storm inlets that still need to be done. So I'm assuming you could still use some volunteers, and if anybody's listening, any church groups, scout groups, anybody that wants to help? Are you still...
Yeah, we could still do that. That kind of faded off in the background just a little bit these last couple of years, because the guy that was doing it left the city. And so, but we need to get that restarted back up again. I think we have several of those still in house yet.
Okay. And we'll keep helping. It just, after doing that many of them, people wanted to do some other things.
Right.
12F, F, accept and execute the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development funding. G, approval and ratification of the City of Bellevue and Bellevue Professional Firefighters Association. H, approval and ratification of the City of Bellevue Police Officers Association. Takes us back to our pre-council agenda. And is there anyone here yet from Sarpy County Economic Development Corporation? Thank you. Please come forward. I think Phil Davidson, do you have the laptop ready for Sarpy EDC?
Was there, I don't know if the file was loaded that was emailed?
I don't know. Phil will be able to help you.
Did you have it loaded? Okay.
All right. Mayor Sanders, members of the council, thank you for your time. Sorry I was a little late. Dan Thiel, President of Sarpy County EDC. I'll try and run through this fairly quickly once we get this up on the screen.
We have our hard copies.
It says it's duplicating. I don't know. Okay. No, no problem. Thank you. Sorry about the technical problems. You should have some statistics and things in your, in your packet that was distributed. I believe you do. Start off with net taxable sales. We get these, the taxable sales statistics, one quarter behind. You should have some numbers showing sales for April, May, and June of 2014. Through, through the second quarter, countywide was up about 20, 20 million from 2013. Most of the communities, including Bellevue, were pretty steady. The big standout is Gretna. Gretna was up 27 million over, excuse me, those would be billions, millions, 27 million over 2013. There's a neat slide in here comparing the Gretna taxable sales numbers from 2013 to 2014, with Papillion back in, I think it was 2006, '07, when Market Point opened. The trajectory is very similar. The scale is just a little bit different, but the trajectory is, trajectory is very similar. It, sorry, we don't have that for you. But at any rate, taxable sales, countywide are strong, pretty steady in most of the communities. Building permit valuations, the third quarter 2014 was down just slightly from the third quarter 2013. Year-to-date, building permits were down, excuse me, were up about 16 million countywide over 2013. I will point, I would note that Bellevue is down, excuse me, is up about 30 million, 34 million, building permit valuations year-to-date, 2014 over 2013. In, in building permits, single-family housing permits are down countywide. Actually, for the third quarter, we're slightly up over the third quarter of 2013. But county, year-to-date, we're down, I've got a slide, but down about 100, single-family housing permits from 2013. The, the big thing there is really a lack of lots, available lots to build on. There are quite a few lots being permitted on the three, in the 370 corridor right now. So you will see those building permit, or single-family permit numbers start to, start to grow again next year, we expect. You have a list of some of the larger valuation projects that have permitted so far in 2014. Richmont Terrace still leads the list at about $12 million in permit valuation. A few other projects, and I won't read all the projects to you, but as far as business activity, it's been, been pretty good for 2014, and we're, we're still working hard to bring new businesses. There has been quite a change in the landscape as far as businesses seeking to locate. There's a trend that you really need to have the, the properties that you're showing tied up with options or purchase agreements. Sarpy County Economic Development has been very aggressive out there, seeking options. We optioned the property where Travelers is currently building last year. We currently have two properties in the Highway 50, on the Highway 50 corridor that we have under option, and we are working together with the City of Bellevue in the area south of, of the, south of the base, looking at a, a potential industrial site, a rail-served industrial site. So we're working together with the City of Bellevue on that project. But we do have, we do have money available for, for options in that area, and there's a grant program through the Greater Omaha Economic Development Partnership where we can share some of those, those option costs with them. So we are continuing to pursue business in that way. Okay?
Thank you, Mr. Thiel. Are there any questions? See none. Thank you for the report.
I'd like to thank the City of Bellevue for your continued membership in Sarpy County EDC.
Thank you for all your work. Do we have someone here from OPPD? See none? That takes us back to item number five, executive session. Ms. Sanyuk.
For the protection of the public interest and for the prevention of needless injury to the reputation of an individual, I move that we go into executive session to discuss real estate negotiations for city properties located at 2216 through 2218 Franklin Street and 210 through 204 West Mission Avenue. Discussion on the sale or lease of city-owned property at Harland and Betts Road adjacent to the SP Benson Fleet Maintenance Building for a digital billboard. Negotiations with World Baseball Village. Discussion on sale or lease of city-owned property on Cunningham Road. Additional discussion of the BPOA collective bargaining agreement. Additional discussion of the BPFA collective bargaining agreement. Discussion concerning procedure for personnel matters and investigations. An update on progress of Bellevue Convention Center project.
Second. Motion by Ms. Sanyuk, second by Ms. Councilwoman Blood. Mr. Preister?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to point out, in the executive session, the council administration had been criticized for not having things spelled out very clearly for what was on the executive session to be discussed. This is very clear. It's very descriptive, and it's what the open meetings law asks for. So with this kind of detail, I just want to commend the administration and the council for making the adjustment, and now we meet those standards very nicely, and our city attorney as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? See none? Please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. It is now 1:58. Will we go into executive session, where our discussion will be limited to, as stated by Ms. Sanyuk? Thank you. Good evening, and welcome to the Bellevue pre, City Council meeting for Monday, November the 10th, 2014. First item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. If you could please rise, and please remain standing for the invocation by, by Father Tom Jones, Church of the Holy Spirit, Episcopal, 1305 Thomas Drive.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we gather on this eve of Veterans' Day to exercise the freedoms afforded by those who serve our country, both past and present, knowing it is to you to whom we must account for all our powers and privileges. Send down upon these who hold office in our city council the spirit of wisdom, charity, and justice. Open their hearts to hear the concerns of those they represent. Guide them so that they may make wise decisions, and enable them, through steadfast purpose, to faithfully serve in their office and promote the well-being of all people. We ask all this through Him who makes all things possible. Amen.
Thank you, Father Tom. Item number two, Sabrina, could you please call, roll?
Mr. Carmichael?
Here.
Ms. Sanyuk?
Here.
Mr. Cook?
Here.
Mr. Knutson?
Here.
Mr. Preister?
Here.
Ms. Blood?
Present.
Item 2A, this meeting will be conducted according to the Open Meetings Act, posted the entry to the council chambers. Item three, approval of minutes and advisory committee reports. 3A, approval of agenda. Councilwoman Blood?
Motion to approve.
Second. Second by Ms. Sanyuk. Any discussion? See none? Please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. 3B, approval of consent agenda. Mr. Preister?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Blood. Any discussion? See none? Please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Item 3C is under consent. 3D is under consent. Item four, also consent. Item number five, special presentation. Proclamation for November 15, 2014, as America Recycles Day. If you want to come forward. I'll go ahead and read the proclamation first. "America Recycles Day Proclamation. Whereas each year the United States generates more than 250 million tons of municipal solid waste, more than four pounds per person per day. According to the Environmental Protection Agency, our nation has reached an overall recycling rate of 34 percent. Much more can be, much more can be and should be done. And whereas, to focus attention to the importance of removing recyclable materials from our city's waste stream, business industries, government agency, non- from our city's waste stream, business industries, government agency, non-profit organizations, and individuals have joined together with Keep America Beautiful to celebrate America Recycles Day two thousand fourteen, and are encouraging their friends, neighbors, and coworkers to pledge to learn more about recycling options in our community, including visiting sarpyrecycle.org, then commit to recycle more materials. And whereas, leaders across Sarpy County are taking this opportunity to raise awareness of the significant benefits of the environmental, environment when psych, recycling is made a priority. We must lighten the load to the landfill by removing recyclable items starting now. And whereas, Bellevue City leaders are encouraging everyone to spread the word about the significant contributions to sustaining and strengthening the local green economy if each person takes greater care to keep valuable recyclable materials out of the landfill. Now, therefore, I, Ruth Sanders, Mayor for the City of Bellevue, do hereby proclaim that Saturday, November fifteen, two thousand fourteen, is America Recycle Day in Bellevue, Nebraska, and I encourage everyone to do their part to reduce, reuse, and recycle. Can I give this to you?
Mayor Sanders, City Council representatives, city staff, and fellow citizens. My name is Ruth Richter, and this is Bobby Richter, and this is Madeline Lee, and we would like to say a few words in acknowledgement of the recycling proclamation that was just presented.
We would like to thank you, Mayor Sanders, and the City Council and city staff for continuing to support increased recycling in the city of Bellevue. We are very proud that our city arranged for curbside recycling for most residents so many years ago. We are also proud that we have recycling drop-off location at two-oh-nine Galvin Road, and recycling is available on almost all city properties today. The more places we can put our recycling shows everyone that recycling is an important daily activity that everyone can and should do.
Unfortunately, though, the fact that we do have curbside recycling here in Bellevue is one of our best-kept secrets. We received statistics from Papillion Sanitation, which is our largest hauler here in Bellevue, from two thousand and thirteen, that of the twenty-thousand tons of waste that was hauled from our city, only fourteen-hundred tons made its way to the recycle center. That's about seven percent of our total waste that's been recycled in two thousand thirteen, and we're on target to that number right now, this year. So that is why we started the Lighten the Load to the Landfill Initiative earlier this year, and we're going to continue this initiative, and it's a county-wide initiative, into the foreseeable future. But we need your continued leadership and support to really make a big difference in this area.
We are here today to offer volunteer organization as a resource individuals in the cities of Sarpy County to collaborate and leverage efforts that would reduce waste going to our landfills and establish a strong green business space. We've launched a website called sarpyrecycle.org for resource and a way to get connected. Working together, we can create a cleaner, greener community. Also, if you respect this, we also have bumper stickers.
They're available on the back. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Item number six, liquor license. Six A, Willow Springs Bottling Company, Inc., doing business as Cornhusker Beverage Mart. Application for Special Two Designated Liquor License to sell beer, wine, and distilled spirits for receptions at Elder Jewelry, one zero five three one, South Fifteenth Street, Suite one oh one, from three to nine P.M. on December the eleventh and the eighteenth, two thousand fourteen. Welcome.
Good evening. That's a hard act to follow. Really is. She's so cute. Elder Jewelry is going to have a, two evenings, basically, that they're going to have a, open to the public, and they're going to have a look-and-see. It's like guys' night out and girls' night out, so they can find the jewelry that each one wants for the other one. And to fill what the liquor commission wants us to do, when they advertise alcoholic beverages, they have to affiliate themselves with a liquor dealer that has a cater's license, and that is us. So we're asking permission from the city council to have those two events on those two dates.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the council? I'll go ahead and open for public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on this item, please do so at this time. I see none. I'll close the public hearing. Councilwoman Blood?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to recommend approval to the Nebraska Liquor Commission for Cornhusker Beverage, this Mart, Mart's application for two special designated liquor licenses to sell beer, wine, and distilled spirits for receptions at Elder Jewelry, one oh five three one, South Fifteenth Street, Suite one oh one, from three P.M. to nine P.M. on both December eleventh and eighteenth, two thousand fourteen.
Second.
Second by Mr. Knutson. Any discussion? See none? Please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Item seven, ordinance for adoption, third reading. Seven A, ordinance number three seven eight two. Sabrina, could you please read the ordinance?
Ordinance number three seven eight two. An ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the City of Bellevue, Nebraska, as provided for by Article Three of Ordinance Number three six one nine, by changing the zone classification of land located at one one zero one Cunningham Road, more particularly described in Section One of the ordinance, and to provide an effective date.
Thank you. Mr. Carmichael.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance thirty-seven eighty-two, resoning lots one and two, Amick Wilson addition, from A.G. to A.G. and R.A. for the purpose of agricultural use. Applicant Scott Wilson.
Second. Second by Ms. Sanyuk. Any discussion? See none? Please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Seven B, ordinance number three seven?
We have to do?
Nope, seven A-one. Mr. Carmichael.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to, for approval of small subjects and plat, lots one and two, Amick Wilson addition.
Second. Second by Councilwoman? Any discussion? See none? Please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Seven B, ordinance number three seven eight three. Sabrina, could you please read the ordinance?
Ordinance number three seven eight three. An ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the City of Bellevue, Nebraska, as provided for by Article Three of Ordinance Number three six one nine, by changing the zone classification of land located at one one eight two two, South Thirty-sixth Street, more particularly described in Section One of the ordinance, and to provide an effective date.
Mr. Cook?
I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance number thirty-seven eighty-three, rezoning Lot One, Anderson Grove, Roth's Anderson Grove, from R.E. to B.N.
Second.
Second by Mr. Knutson. Any discussion? See none? Please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Item eight, ordinance for public hearing, second reading. Eight A, ordinance number three seven eight five. Sabrina, could you read the ordinance?
Ordinance number three seven eight five. An ordinance to amend Section two dash nine five of the Bellevue City Code pertaining to procedures for a veto by the mayor, and to provide for the effective date of this ordinance.
Thank you. I'll now open for public hearing on this item. Anyone wishing to speak on this item, please do so at this time. See none? I'll close the public hearing. The third reading and adoption of this ordinance will be on Monday, November twenty-fourth. Eight B, ordinance number three seven eight six. Sabrina, could you please read the ordinance?
Ordinance number three seven eight six. An ordinance to, to amend Section eighteen dash seven six of the Bellevue City Code pertaining to parking of recreational vehicles in residential zones, and to provide for the effective date of this ordinance.
Thank you. I'll now open for public hearing on this item. Anyone wishing to speak on this item, please do so at this time. See none? I'll close the public hearing. The third reading and adoption of this ordinance will be on Monday, November twenty-fourth. Item number nine, ordinance for introduction, first reading. Nine A, ordinance number three seven eight seven. Sabrina, could you please read the ordinance?
Ordinance number three seven eight seven. An ordinance declaring the necessity, expediency, and propriety of vacating the street abutting a tract of land, being the south thirty-one feet of Bernada Avenue adjoining the north line of Lot thirty-eight Heritage Hills, located in the southwest quarter of Section seventeen, Township fourteen north, range thirteen east of the Sixth Prime Meridian, Sarpy County, Nebraska, not heretofore vacated, repealing all ordinances and all parts of ordinances in conflict herewith, and designating an effective date.
Thank you. The second reading and public hearing on this item will be Monday, November twenty-fourth. Mr. Preister.
Thank you, Mayor. Sorry to interrupt your reading, but it, it's, I'm going to make a motion on this to suspend the rules, but first I want to explain that this property owner is interested in getting some construction done during this season, and if, those of you who came in know, the weather is changing real quickly. So it's an unusual thing. We don't normally do it, except under special conditions. I know of no objection to this. So for those reasons, I will make a motion that we suspend the council rules and hold a public hearing tonight, suspend the two succeeding readings, and then after the public hearing, have a vote yet tonight. That's my motion.
Second. Second by Ms. Sanyuk. Any discussion? See none? Please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. I'll now open for public hearing on this item. Anyone wishing to speak on this item, please do so at this time. See none? I'll close the public hearing. Mr. Cook?
Jeff or Chris, could you explain what they're doing here? I know it involves construction, but is it a garage or?
It's some kind of a outbuilding. It's either a garage or a shed. I'm not sure exactly which, but they need this additional feet in order to meet their setbacks requirement for it.
What are the wishes of the council? Mr. Preister?
Thank you, Mayor. Having held the public hearing and suspended the rules, I will move to approve ordinance number three seven eight seven.
Second. Second by Mr. Knutson. Any discussion? See none? Please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Nine B, ordinance number three seven eight eight. Sabrina, could you please read the ordinance?
Ordinance number three seven eight eight. An ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the City of Bellevue, Nebraska, as provided for by Article Three of Ordinance Number three six one nine, by changing the zone classification of land located at or about Forty-eighth Street and Rayner Parkway, more particularly described in Section One of the ordinance, and to provide an effective date.
Thank you. The second reading and public hearing on this item will be Monday, November twenty-fourth. Nine C, ordinance number three seven eight nine. Sabrina, could you please read the ordinance?
Ordinance number three seven eight nine. An ordinance to amend Section two dash three zero of the Bellevue Municipal Code pertaining to the City Council's Order of Business, to repeal such section as heretofore existing, and to provide for the effective date of this ordinance.
Thank you. The second reading and public hearing will be Monday, November twenty-fourth. Ms. Sanyuk?
I was going to give a short synopsis of, of this ordinance, but I think it's probably best left for next time with the public hearing.
Thank you. Item ten, public hearing on matters of the ordinance, none. Eleven resolution, none. Item twelve, current business, twelve A under consent, B under consent, C under consent, and D under consent. Twelve E, acceptance of grant funding from two thousand fourteen Stormwater Management Plan Program in the amount of seventy-two thousand nine hundred nineteen, and authorization for the mayor to sign the two thousand fourteen Stormwater Management Plan. Mr. Preister.
Thank you, Mayor. I move that we approve acceptance of the grant funding from the two thousand fourteen Stormwater Management Plan Program in the amount of seventy-two thousand nine hundred nineteen dollars, and authorize the mayor to sign the two thousand fourteen Stormwater Management Plan.
Second. Second by Mr. Knutson. Any discussion? See none? Please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. F, twelve F, accept and execute the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development's funding approval agreement for fiscal year two thousand fourteen Community Development Block Grant. Councilwoman Blood?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we accept and execute the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development's funding approval slash agreement for the funding year of two thousand fourteen Community Development Block Grant, funding in the amount of two-hundred-and-ninety-one thousand, eight-hundred-and-twenty-four thousand dollars.
Second.
Second by Mr. Carmichael. Any discussion? See none? Please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Twelve G, approval and ratification of the City of Bellevue and the Bellevue Professional Firefighters Association. Ms. Sanyuk?
Motion to approve and ratify the City of Bellevue and the Bellevue Professional Firefighters Association.
Second.
Mr. Preister, second. Mr. Preister? Under discussion?
Yes, for discussion, Mayor. Thank you. I just want to thank the administration and the Bellevue firefighters for sitting down together, amicably coming to this agreement. Our H.R. department and our legal counsel. It was not an easy task to bring everybody together, but with council approval and the mayor and everyone working together, we're at this point, and it's good to be able to ratify a contract. So my compliments to everyone involved.
Ms. Sanyuk?
I will offer an amendment now. Is that how we do it, correct?
Yes.
Offer to amend the Bellevue Professional Firefighters Association contract by adding the words in Article twenty-six, Section one, which line? Line seven, adding the words, "Consider current part-time employees covered under this agreement, and add 'and' any other City of Bellevue employees."
Second.
Second by Mr. Preister. And we're voting on the amendment. Any discussion before we vote? Please vote.
Vote as five to one.
Thank you. Now we vote as?
As amended.
As amended. Any discussion? See none? Please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Twelve H, approval and ratification of the City of Bellevue and the Bellevue Police Officers Association. Mr. Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion to, for approval and ratification of the City of Bellevue and the Bellevue Police Officers Association Collective Bargaining Agreement.
Second.
Second by Mr. Knutson. Any discussion? See none? Please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Item thirteen, public request to be heard. Any member of the public addressing the council shall abide by Council Policy Resolution Number thirty-five regarding the principles of conduct and decorum, which states, "Any statement made during the city council meeting by the mayor, members of the city council, city officials, and employees, or members of the general public shall not involve personal, impertinent, or slanderous attacks on individuals, regardless of whether the individual so attacked is elected official, city official, or employee, or a member of the general public," City Code dash two dash six eight, regarding the manners of dressing the councils. Copies of the aforementioned rules are posted outside the council chambers. Speakers shall limit the presentation to five minutes.
Good evening. Chuck Frederick, one-five-one-one, Madison Street. Couple of things I've talked about before. One, at least one thing is that, take that land that you have for sale on Thirty-sixth Street across from Anderson Grove Church, because that's where the library's going to go. Why would you sell that land that you own and then try to figure out some of the land? That, I've talked about that before, and I haven't got any response back on that. I've talked about that before, and I haven't got any response back on that at all. The other thing was that about a month ago, I talked to Mike Foley in person and found out something interesting that you might want to absorb and think about in that, I as you know, I'm on record as saying we shouldn't have put a contract for five years for the auditing firm. I think that's way too long period of time. I mentioned that to him, and he said that what can be done, what cities have done in the past, is where somebody or the council or whoever wants to have a state audit come in and do the audit, instead of having the auditing firm do it, that you can have it so that the state auditing firm does the auditing for next year and just move that five-year contract starting in two thousand and sixteen. So that's something you might want to consider doing, because I really do believe we need to have a state auditor come in here and go over the, over the, over the books. The other thing that I wanted to mention is that on May, I mean, I'm sorry, November second, on Sunday, there was an article in the paper written by Roseanne Mourning, and there were some things in there that she got incorrect. About a year ago, she did a, she wrote something in the paper about myself at a city council meeting, which was incorrect. I called her on it and pointed it out to her, and, and she realized she made a mistake, but she wouldn't make a retraction. I called to her, her boss, Jeff Robb, I want her fired because she doesn't report properly. Well, then, when it came time for being interviewed for the mayor position, I asked not to have her as, as the person interviewing me. And, and Jeff Robb said, it's either her or nobody. So when she was interviewing me, I had a person down there with me, as a witness and also a tape recorder. And, but some of the things she wrote in, in the article, mentioned some things that some of the council people and appointed officials said that I think I want to at least comment on. One thing was that she kept on talking about me firing the city leadership. Well, I'm not going to fire, I wouldn't have fired people, I would have replaced them. There's a big difference as far as I'm concerned. And she talked about the, she said, "He wants assets and liabilities listed on the one page, even though Bellevue officials say the city finances are too complicated to be contained on a single sheet." Now, we all know that a balance sheet is not too complicated. It's one page, it should be done by this city, it's done by most cities, it's done by almost all companies that are surviving. So she, she doesn't, she's a young lady, doesn't understand business at all. Then another thing was that she, she indicated that I create tension with the city council. Well, I don't know if that's, if I'm coming up here talking and giving suggestions, rather than, people want to try to give me the image of being negative, and I, the things I've talked about are not negative, it's things to try to improve this city. Also, another thing she had wrong, too, is this, I warned on purpose, is that at one council meeting, Mr. May, he arrived wearing a red Hawaiian shirt to talk about the city's ambulance building. This is not a Hawaiian shirt. I bought this in Mexico, and my son got married down there. So she even got that fact wrong, too. The other thing was that there was, there was a time when, you got to find it here.
Mr. Frederick, your time is up.
It's not, it's not five minutes yet.
It has been five minutes. I've been watching the time, and I think this is something for you to take up with the Omaha World Herald, not the council.
Well, I'm going to ask for more time. Steve, Steve is shaking his head no, but I think he got the point.
Thank you. Is there any other that would like to speak this evening?
Well, there's a vote. You have to have a vote.
We don't have a motion, sir.
Oh, okay. Okay. The good news is I won't be coming down much anymore, so you might think that's good news, but I will be doing things. Look at my website, please, chuckfrederick.com. I would like to have what I said on record also.
Are there others that would like to speak at this time? I'll close a public request to be heard. Item number thirteen, adjournment. Before we adjourn tomorrow is Veterans' Day, and to all our veterans and their family, we salute you and appreciate all you and your family for what you do and have done and continue to do for our community and our nation. Thank you. Our next council meeting will be Monday, November twenty-fourth. Councilwoman Blood.
Motion to adjourn.
And also, City Hall will be closed tomorrow.
And City Hall will be closed tomorrow, November the eleventh, two thousand and fourteen. Second by Mr. Preister. Any discussion? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you, and have a good evening.